Thank you. Announcements, awards, special recognition, we have a very special award to share, Dr. J. Jeffrey Marshall Excellence in Emergency Cardiac Care Award. Chief Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to call up the winners of this award. The team is Blake Chisholm, Brian Glennie, Dwayne Gowen, Trent Jenkins, Jared Joyner, Brian McKenzie, and Landon Steenburgen, and Frank Thompson. Okay, so what I'd like to do is explain what they've done. During triathlon on April the 30th of 2022, these individuals came together along with the police officers and athlete bystander to render lifesaving aid to one of the athletes participating in the triathlon. The individual had a cardiac arrest on the last leg of the run, finishing the run, and went into cardiac arrest. The location was on the path alongside Lake Peachtree, access was not great for the responders, and the race continued alongside the incident, so they were still running while this man was on the ground. The athletes, one of the athletes stopped and just happened to be a certified nurse anesthetist and began CPR. She stayed with the patient until the ambulance arrived, and when she finished, and then she finished her race. Police Corporal Jason McKinnon assisted her with CPR until Lieutenant Blake Chisholm and Lieutenant Gowen, who were on the lake doing water rescue for the triathlon, recognized their proximity to the emergency. They proceeded to the shoreline and beached the boat and rendered aid. Firefighter Thompson, Steenburgen, and Lieutenant Glennie arrived on Engine 82 and used an AED to provide defibrillation and a higher level of care. While awaiting and arriving Medic 84 with Lieutenant Joyner and firefighter McKenzie, they were bringing the patient over rough terrain to gain access and move him while people were running past them. They continued to work on the patient, and they had the stress of the race going on around them. Everyone stepped up and maintained their professionalism and provided excellent care. The patient survived due to the excellent work of these members and has returned home to continue his recovery, and we'd like to show you a video of how Mr. Wayne Moats and his family are doing after this event.
It was a typical day in our day, our life. He was gonna go to the triathlon in the morning, and I was gonna help give a wedding shower in Milton, you know, the other end of the world, that morning, and then we were gonna meet at the airport and fly out to see my daughter that afternoon for her recital. And I had a son that was already out there, too, for the recital. So we had kids in Texas, we had one in New York, one in Atlanta, and then the two of us were split in Atlanta, and we were gonna meet at the airport. So that was how the day started. Just the night before, I said, why don't you just not go? It's gonna be, you've been out of town. He got home at like midnight the night before, and he said, no, 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 Scott and I are gonna go, we're going to do it, it's gonna be fun, and then, you know. So he did, he got up at 3:00 AM, got all this stuff together, took off, took off down to Peachtree City. Then I got up a few hours later, got all my wedding shower stuff together, and was heading towards Milton. I got a phone call from Peachtree City Police, and he said that there had been an incident at the race, and I said, what happened? You know, did it have to do with his heart? What happened? And he said he really couldn't say at that time, but it would be good for me to go to Piedmont Hospital.
We heard on the radio the call, patient down on the cart path. My partner and I got as close as we could, I hopped out, went up there and found Mr. Moats and Chief Glennie, we kind of converged at the same time.
When we got there, we started compressions first, CPR.
I don't know if you've done CPR before, after about two minutes of doing it, you're smoked. And it takes one firefighter out of the equation to do something else, like work on airway or deliver medications.
Well, we have devices called the Lucas Device. It actually takes over compressions for the provider, and it's, it's big with the changes in the CPR service these days and how we, how we deliver CPR. You have to really make sure that the depth of compressions and everything is accurate and the amount, and when you have all that going on, especially in an uncontrolled environment like a golf cart path with, with, we had people still running by us and tripping over the equipment and everything else, something like the Lucas Device is an asset to have.
Not having to perform CPR while somebody's being walked through the woods up a cart path, because Lucas is taking care of it for us, is a, is a lifesaver. It makes a big difference in the actual level of care that's being rendered during that transition.
What happened there was just like clockwork, that people knew what to do, they did it, and they did it well. And they, they wound up having to shock him two times to bring him back, and they got him to the hospital. And interestingly enough, one of the EMS workers was working on my husband, and then he was married to a woman in the ER, so he literally handed my, he was working, working, working to save his life, and he literally handed my husband over to his wife, who continued the process, which I thought was kind of a sweet, interesting, you know, piece of information that took place there. I, thank you seems like it's not enough, it's really not, and you know, I brought some goodies down to the fire station here and there, but that's not enough. These, these people saved my husband's life, and of course God did, too, because it's truly miraculous that he was here. You know, his medical records state that he was without a heartbeat for 22 minutes, and that's just something that people don't, don't survive. And so, and he did. And it's been a long haul, but, but he's still here and he's still progressing.
Oh, man, I'm glad we had what we had, I'm glad we were able to help, and I'm glad he's up moving around, able to, you know, enjoy his, his family and his life.
It's not like they're doing a job. You could tell they really cared, and that meant a lot to us, so. I didn't know the treasure that Peachtree City was to the metro Atlanta area. They had high-tech equipment, they had very capable and very well-trained EMS workers and so forth. The hospital was top-notch. When we discovered all this, which we didn't know, we were amazed at this treasure that Peachtree City is down there, and so we're just so grateful for that. We're so thankful to God that he still, that Wayne still has time on this earth, and it's really him.
Yep. What's next?
So each one of these members is being presented tonight with a distinguished service award for a successful cardiac save. The group of employees certainly displayed our department's values and demonstrated professional excellence while carrying out their jobs and providing care for one of our visitors. Mayor and Council, I would like to present this award to you and to say thank you for, thank you to you for providing the equipment, the training, and most importantly, the right people for this to be successful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have public comment?
Madam Mayor, we have three public comments. The first one is by Joshua Hertz.
Hello, Madam Mayor and esteemed City Council. My name is Josh Hertz, a local resident of Braylon Village. I'm here to propose permitting electric personal watercraft on Lake Peachtree, something that's clearly popular with local residents. Single rider electric personal watercraft don't emit noise, pollution, or wake, and thus support the image of Peachtree City. They don't disrupt the local ecology or damage the shoreline, and they're already regulated by the Georgia DNR, which will ensure safe operational standards. The current ordinance requires Peachtree City residents to drive over an hour to the next available lake for this currently, so the Peachtree City, Peachtree City has already adapted to the emergence of e-bikes on the PATH system. Do the same for electric personal watercraft. Considering the demographics and existing state regulation, cost, utility, other factors, the number of devices operating concurrently will be low. Please drive equity and inclusion by extending usage rights to all Peachtree City residents by allowing the use of single rider electric personal watercraft on Lake Peachtree. Community supports removal of the current three horsepower and jet-powered verbiage from the ordinance. Replace these with a more practical 18 mile per hour limit, 100 pound weight limit, and a Monday through Friday schedule eliminating unnecessary interactions with weekend swimmers, paddleboarders. The Council must use their power to enact fair, equitable, and inclusive lake rights for all Peachtree City residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
The second speaker is Mr. Eric Schufrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'll be brief. Mr. Hertz said everything I wanted to say today. I'd like to add one detail. This is not a matter of whether or not we can run electric personal watercraft on Lake Peachtree solely, it's a matter of choice, the ability to wake up in the morning and choose how we choose to recreate on Lake Peachtree. To this point, we've never had the opportunity to choose to use electric or any kind of motorized vehicles on the lake, and if we were talking about gas vehicles, this suggestion would be inappropriate. But technology has changed. These devices are small, they are light, these are not electric wave runners that weigh 800 pounds, these are paddleboards. They take up very little room, and it makes sense to adapt to these new changes as we work through the changes in our ordinances anyway. My ask is to consider that people have a choice when they wake up in the morning, to be fairly inequitably included in some of the benefits that our other residents have already enjoyed. That's all I ask. Thank you.
The last person who's signed up is Mr. John Dufresne.
Mayor, Council members, John Dufresne, Preston Chase. Council wanted to control Wassa and used accountability as their excuse. They took the steps necessary for the mayor and council members to be installed as the Wassa Board. Three of you were on council then. The mayor and council members became the Wassa Board on 1 July 2018. On 23 July 2018, the Wassa Board was briefed by Integrated Science and Engineering about sewer system, identifying a priority list of 87 projects, capital projects, that needed to be done in five to 10 years for an estimated cost of $24.4 million. They also approved a contract for Integrated Science and Engineering to manage Wassa, which it still does. Wassa has spent only around $2 million for capital projects in four years, from fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 2022. It's not known publicly how much, if any, of the $2 million went towards the 87 priority projects. Wassa hasn't made the priority list available to the public online, nor have they approved publicly any capital project contracts. The general manager, who owns Integrated Science and Engineering, told the Wassa Board on 20 October 2020 that the sewer system infrastructure was, was in good shape and didn't foresee any problems in the next five to seven years. Mr. King and Mr. Preborg didn't question the general manager's statement, even though they had been briefed just two years earlier about the 87 priority projects that needed to be done in five to 10 years. At the 23 March 23, 2023 Wassa meeting, the general manager told the board about a blocked sewer pipe under Highway 74 from the avenues that needed replacing soon before a spill occurred. The cost would be $750,000 to $1 million. He had known about the blockage for at least two years. The pipe is listed 37th on the priority list of 87.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
May I complete it, please?
Yes, yes.
37th on the priority list of 87 projects identified almost five years earlier, but wasn't considered that high a priority. How much less expensive would the replacement have been two years ago? The Wassa Board has been negligent in maintaining the sewer system for the past four years. They unnecessarily deferred capital projects, which certainly will increase cost. So how exactly has Wassa been held accountable with the mayor and council members on the board? You want Wassa accountable? Dissolve Wassa and bring the sewer system into the city as an enterprise activity like stormwater, so council can be directly accountable and responsible.
Agenda changes, Council? None? Minutes, March 16th, 2023 meeting minutes, March 16th, 2023 executive session minutes. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the March 16th, 2023 meeting minutes, the March 16th, 2023 executive session minutes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, item one, surplus and disposal of 2003 asphalt zipper and trailer. Number two, revocation of CAMs regarding fire department operations. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as listed, item one, surplus, surplus and disposal of 2003 asphalt zipper and trailer, and revocation of the CAMs regarding fire department operations.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Old agenda items, we have none. New agenda items, 42301, policy 814, public comment guidelines. Mr. Vestadio?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I want to make just a quick comment for you. Many of you left the March 23rd meeting where this was first addressed in our public comment section. This was actually a pretty exciting, I think, time for us, because everybody on the council wanted to make comments about extending our two minutes to 20 minutes, and, and the two minutes to go to three minutes, and 20 minutes to go to 30 minutes, and I thought it was great that everybody in the council made comments and suggestions about it. So I just wanted you to know, even though I brought it up, it was really a council effort to want to expand that. In fact, several of the, the council members were talking about possibly going to four minutes. So it was a full council support to try to expand and improve the communications for the city. Since we don't have our city clerk, I was gonna read just the highlights of, rather than reading the entire procedure, I wanted to read just the highlights of what we'll talk about as we get through the action tonight. So the guidelines were set out in the policy of our ordinance, that the guidelines were approved by the mayor and the council. Comments on the agenda items, comments on agenda items at the night's agenda will not be permitted during the public comment portion of the agenda. Speaker will, will have, the speakers will have to pre-register between 6:00 PM and 6:30 PM on the night of the meeting. No registrations can be taken after 6:30 PM. Public comment sections placed, will be placed at the, the public comment section will be placed at the end of the agenda, and each speaker will have three minutes at that time, and may be extended by the majority vote of the council and the mayor. And the 30-minute time period may be extended by majority vote of the council and mayor. So that's what it says in our ordinance right now, and I open that up to the council for comments. Madam Mayor?
Comments? You want to go?
Yeah, I'll go first, if you don't mind. I only have one comment on the section where it's gonna be placed in the agenda. Instead of at the end, I'd like to place it where it's been before, which would be, I guess, section four of our agenda, where public comment has been for a long time. I'd like to leave it back there, put it back there instead of at the end. I think it's in deference to, in my opinion, it's in deference to the people who come here for specific items that are on there and not, and have to wait till the end. Now, we're not gonna have them wait till the end, we're gonna put them where they have been all along, which is in section four of our agenda. That's all I've got. Madam Mayor?
And I know it's been like this since I've been on council, and I don't understand why we say, oh, you can't comment on something that's on the agenda, and I, I've never really seen it come up. If, if it's come up and somebody's been cut, cut off, I don't remember. I think it's one of those antiquated things, and I think if somebody wants to comment on something on the agenda, what better time to do it than the night?
Public comment.
Otherwise, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have an opportunity. Some of the, some of the things we have tonight, they wouldn't even have known about it. So I'd like to make it where that person can comment whatever he wants to.
Mr. Vestadio, your comments? Any further?
My only comment would be that we ought to allow the people to maybe make their comments, excuse me, sign up for registration the way it used to be between 6:30 and 7:00, rather than at 6:00 and 6:30.
We start the meeting at 6:30, so we have to have the sign up between 6:00 and 6:30.
Okay. That's my only comment.
If I may, the making comments on agenda items, we've discussed it a year ago, our city clerk, our city manager at the time strongly discouraged it. It becomes very clunky and confusing as far as what you're speaking to. I would suggest that if we want to make that change, that we do it under, under another ordinance change, or we discuss it at another time. It becomes very confusing. The audience still has to get clarification from the city clerk what public comments are for, and we do not, I assure you, we do not want to mix them with agenda items. So if, if we may, I, I hear what you guys are saying about not moving the public comment section to the end, I'll agree to that, that's fine. I'll put that at the beginning, but I would propose, Phil, that we keep it, stick to that.
And then we really need, need to wait and...
Do we need an amendment on this? Would I, would that be an appropriate thing, Madam Mayor?
Sure, we can do that.
I, I'd like, I'd like to make an amendment on, I guess it's section polit, polit, section two, which is the policy, where it says the public comment section will be placed at the, toward the end of the agenda. I'd amend that to say toward the beginning of the agenda, specifically, it's been in section four of the agenda, I'd like to put it back there.
That's the third, that's the third bullet. Okay?
And then we're gonna in the future talk about...
We can talk about it, yeah.
But the amendment is out there, is that, is that a motion?
That's fine. Can I get a motion with the amendment? Just get a motion to approve with the amendment.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment I just spoke about regarding putting the agenda item of public comment at the beginning in section four of our agenda, where it's been all along.
Motion, motion to approve would be for new agenda item 42301 with the amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Adam.
I want to make one other comment, Clint, before you jumped into that.
Okay.
The fourth that we have, the three-minute section will be strictly limited regardless of the speaker, but may only be extended by the majority of the council. I think that's standard.
Yes.
I think we can always extend it like you just did for ones, fine, I'm fine with that.
Let's get that motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. New agenda item 42302, award 2023 paving bid to Atlanta Paving and Concrete. Jonathan Miller.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So staff solicited bids from several paving companies. We've received two back this year for the 2023 paving. Atlanta Paving and Concrete for approximately 8.7 million, and CW Matthews for almost 11 million. So just a little insight, this bid was extremely similar to the same bid we released last year mileage-wise, but the trend has been higher prices, so the unit prices for this bid are actually 50, at least 50% higher, some of the unit prices are more than that for this particular bid. However, we do have sufficient funds in the SPOSS to do this bid, so maybe in the future we kind of look at how to tailor it if this, if these price trends continue for our paving contracts, but as it sits now, staff recommends that the city council award the 2023 paving bid to the low bidder, Atlanta Paving and Concrete, in the amount of $8,724,888.87. My only comment is that, you know, when we got started doing the paving, we had, our roads were Class A, B, C, D. I mentioned this to Bob during our meeting, and that we've done an excellent job doing both As and Bs and Cs and Ds, so we don't get all the bad stuff done first and the good stuff deteriorates. Right. And, and you guys had said you're gonna continue to try to do that as you cut back, if we have to cut back. I think that's the best way to do it, I hope you're gonna continue to do that. Right. And two, the prices are only gonna go up. I mean, we all know that, especially machinery equipment and asphalt costs are gonna go up, so I think this is still a good approach. I support that.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Can I ask the amount of mileage that this will cover over this period of time?
So in the current bid, usually we, we have excess money to do more, but this bid is specifically for 14 and a half miles, so that's, that's what was bid.
Can you speak to the, the analysis that is forthcoming?
Yes, so I was hoping that...
You know, I like this idea, this is something that was done, I don't know, four or five years ago for the first time or something?
Right, and, and it's...
And it's something that I'm glad we did it then, and I'm glad we're continuing it, but I think maybe some of the general public would like to hear it.
So it is in the final stages. I've seen preliminary information, I just haven't spoke on it, just because I want it to be final and all the data correct. I was hoping to actually have it concurrent with the paving bid, but it didn't work out that way, but we have done a massive amount of...
Could you give an overview, so again, the general public knows, I know what you're talking about, but they might not.
As far as the, what the study and the study...
What the process and what we're doing and what they do, I mean, you know, the Reader's Digest version.
Right. I'll be very quick. The study basically has equipment with lasers and all kinds of analysis tools, they drive the roads, and they've determined based on cracking, a multitude of factors that determine pavement condition, and they assign a rating to it from zero to 100. So they've done, they've already rode and started the, completed the analysis on our, our network.
Every street.
Every street has been done that was within the city limits, even those we've annexed in the past few years, and the new ones off of McDuff. So we've got all that information, they'll compile that, and basically, kind of like Frank alluded to, that system goes through and it allocates based on the budget that you want to put towards paving, the order in which you pave the roads. So yes, you are grabbing roads that may be better than the worst, because you're not wanting them to get to that point, and usually, it'll spend that money maintaining, and then if your budget's high enough, it'll start to grab the roads that are bad. So it's kind of like, a bad road, really, from one year to the next, is gonna be about the same amount of money to fix it, if it's deteriorated to the point of, especially FDR. So an FDR this year is gonna be similar to an FDR next year, so that's kind of how that, that system works. It's looking at that, it's trying to catch those roads before they fall into a more expensive rehab. So that's kind of the digest version.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
I may. Sure. Old agenda item 042302, award 2023 paving bid to Atlanta Paving and Concrete. Unfortunately, I don't have the amount.
Here it is.
Pull back your motion, Frank, and I got it. Do you mind?
No, that's good.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve new agenda item 042302, or 2023 paving bid to Atlanta Paving and Concrete, for the amount of $8,724,888.87.
Can I get a second? Sure. Old agenda item 042302, award 2023 paving bid to Atlanta Paving and Concrete. Unfortunately, I don't have the amount.
Here it is.
Pull back your motion, Frank, and I got it. Do you mind?
No, that's good.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve new agenda item 042302 for 2023 paving bid to Atlanta Paving and Concrete for the amount of $8,724,888.87.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jonathan.
New agenda item 42303, employee compensation plan. Elise Brown.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, thank you. Just before Elise gets on, we have some staff that's going to provide a presentation for us this evening on an item that we've been working on for several months. So, as though we're going to give a timeline of when this process actually started for the city far before I was actually here. I went back and looked in my notes, and before I was sitting in this seat on December the 16th, I had Zoom meetings with all senior staff in reference to my coming onboard as the city manager and kind of understanding where our challenges and our opportunities were. And the general consensus through those meetings were two priorities. The priorities for the city were our ability to retain the current employees that we have in specific areas of the city. A lot of those were in public safety, police and fire. And the second one was the ability to compensate and be marketable in the area to bring folks here for those positions. So, as it would show, that we have been in a situation for a couple of years. We go through the presentation, that we have been in a decline when it comes to being competitive in the market to bring people here in specific job classifications. So, hopefully, that is clearly illustrated through this presentation. Once we get through, we'll open it up for any questions that you all may have. So, with that, Elise, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wrong. There we go. I wanted to start the presentation tonight with a historical timeline. It looks at basically, it looks at basically the past 10 years. So, we go back to 2014, and that is when the Condre Comp and Benefits Study was done. They were a professional consulting group, and this type of study had not been done for 14 years at that time. So, they were brought in to do this study. And the recommendation from the Condre Group, the total recommendation was $1.2 million, and that included benefit costs, which is your Social Security, Medicare, workers' comp, and so on. That was approved, and I'm sorry, that was the wrong cost factor. That one was $900,000. So, that was approved at that time. There were no pay increases until 2018, after that study was done. Then we come to 2021. In between 2018, 2021, we did have some COLAs. We also had some salary scale adjustments, merit increases, career plan development, or career development plans. But in 2021, the MAGS study was done. It wasn't adopted by council until 2022. The recommendation from the MAGS study was the $1.2 million. But that plan was not fully implemented. What was implemented cost the city approximately $584,000, and that included benefits as well, Social Security, Medicare, and so on. So, then after the MAGS study was done, we go to a time where we continued to see staffing, recruiting, issues retaining our staff, and so on. Inflation at the time was about 8.2%. There was a COLA last year, two of them, that totaled 5%. Unemployment, as you all know, is almost at an all-time low. It's 3.25%. And typically, when you have unemployment that reaches that low number, many of those individuals are not seeking to enter the workforce. So, what staff decided was we needed to do another study, and it was done internally. There were many hands that went into this study. And it, what we see tonight, you'll see the results of the study. But we looked at market analysis. We looked at a goal to be at 85% in the market. We call that the 85th percentile. So, we weren't looking to be the highest-paid city in the state. We're looking to be at the 85th percentile. And we also found, when we looked at benefits, that the area we needed to address was our defined benefit changes. And you'll see that and hear that from Paul when he speaks tonight. So, after this internal study and what we'll share with you, we know that going forward, we will still need to maintain regular COLAs. Those are based on the CPI. We will continue with our merit program, our career development plans, regular comp studies, and the best practice on the regular comp studies is typically every five years. So, that's what we'll do going forward.
Bob, could I make a comment? Excuse me, Elise?
Sure.
I think the 85th percentile was identified by the MAGS initially. It wasn't done by the staff. And the, and the council, the previous council approved that 85%.
That's correct.
So, it really wasn't the staff that decided on that number, but...
No, no. So, when the MAGS group was hired by the previous council, the previous city administrator, city manager, the goal was set to look at the 85th percentile for all employees across the board.
Right.
So, when that was actually looked at in the verification, and we'll go back and look at, at this as we go through the presentation, but you're absolutely right. So, it was set at 85, but it was not fully implemented to the 85th percentile, which has put us in this position we're at right now.
I understand, but it wasn't the staff, is what I was trying to make.
That's, you are correct.
So, what were the study goals? As we just talked through this, we were trying to ensure that all the positions were at least compensated at the 85th percentile of the current market, and that we had similar benefits to the current market. We considered things like external competition. Obviously, that's very important. We looked at the relevant labor markets and our competitors. We looked at internal equity, which is, which would be the positions performing similar work with the same level of complexity, responsibilities, knowledge required, and so on. And those positions are generally classified together. You will see tonight some information on suggested organizational change. And in the public safety area, we would like to create a new pay scale that is separate from the general employees' pay scale for fire and police. The main purpose for that is really operational. The general employee works an average of 2,080 hours annually. The police department, the certified officers work 2184 hours annually. And then the fire department works the 2920 hours annually. So, it's somewhat confusing. So, we'd like to separate those positions out from the general employee positions. And then, as I mentioned, the defined benefit plan changes that Paul will discuss. The scope of the study included approximately 372 positions and 120 job titles. These are the 14 local government employers that we looked at. These are the same 14 cities and counties that the MAGS study looked at. And these are the findings of the study. You'll see here by departments on the left-hand side of the screen, and you'll notice that the vertical line here represents the 85th percentile. So, all of the departments except one, which happens to be our library, is below the 85th percentile, particularly for public safety, which we've had the hardest-hit area. The police department, I don't have my glasses on, is, I think, 42%? 48? Okay. See why I need my glasses? The fire department is at 69%. Okay. So, these were the findings from the study that was done. So, we picked, just to show you, basically, three of our critical positions, where they are currently paid and what we recommend. And here you see a police officer. So, you look at this list of approximately 14 cities and counties, and you see that Peachtree City, the, currently, the starting rate of pay for a police officer is 52,608.86. Then you see the midpoint and the maximum. That is at the 60th percentile. So, I see this as basically we fall in the middle of our competitors. Now, this chart was compiled by the police department, and it shows in the top half of the screen, if we look at back in 2015, if we advertised a police officer position, we basically were receiving about 160 applications. So, you see as time goes on, that number decreases. To now, when we advertise a position, we receive approximately 59 applications. Now, we're not saying all of these are qualified, but these are the numbers we're receiving. The bottom half of the screen shows the hires and the departures since 2015. You see there that we have, in 2015, we've had, I think that's 20 departures and 18 hires, and that moves on until 2022. At one point, we did have 11 openings in the police department. That has dwindled down a little bit, thank goodness. And currently, we have five openings. We know that seven of our officers are eligible for retirement. We know of one officer that's interviewing with an agency for higher pay. And just to compare, of course, we'd love to hire certified officers. They can make an impact much more quickly, and the cost is much less to the city. An uncertified officer that would have to go to post, to bring that person onboard, that cost is $33,000. To bring a certified officer onboard, it's $6,700. So, that saves us roughly $26,000. And it also saves us in the time that they can make a difference in the community. The time difference is basically seven months. And that's time that is spent in training, field training here, and so on. So, this is where we're proposing to move the police officer. Here's, where's my... Corner tied. There it is. We're proposing to move the police officer's salary grade to $58,800. You see the midpoint and the maximum. And that would move it up to the 90th percentile. And sometimes, it's very difficult to hit it right at 85%. So, this would leave Sandy Springs being higher than Peachtree City. And I can tell you, when we contacted Sandy Springs, they basically said they were going to remain the highest-paid. So, this would put us second behind Sandy Springs. Too many digits. Too many things to do. So, now we move to the fire department. Again, you see on the left-hand side of the screen, the different cities and counties. But please note that those that are in red do not provide EMS transport like Peachtree City does. And Roswell firefighters are all part-time. So... Currently, the firefighter, firefighter EMT is at 52,608.86. That's at the 64th percentile. Now, again, as I mentioned earlier, this is based on their working 2,920 hours annually. So, this is the proposed salary grade. Moves us up to the 89th percentile. We wanted to have parity between the fire department and the police department, so it moves them to 58,800, the midpoint and the maximum. When I mentioned about having a separate pay scale for police and fire, this is typically what it would look like. The police department certified positions would be in the 200, and that's just operationally what we would do. It would be in the 200 scales. And the fire department would be in the 300 scales. This gives you the, the hourly min, mid, max, and the annual min, mid, max.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm taking over from Elise to highlight here, where I just want to highlight some non-public safety positions that we looked at, or really just kind of highlight one here. We wanted to show this one just because it is an example of our mid-level managers. So, with this, we looked at the whole organization. We didn't just look at public safety because we wanted to look at it as an organization-wide study. So, when we looked at, like, fleet manager, for example, it's at the 67th composite percentile there. And so, we also wanted to make some adjustments with those to where we actually are around that 85th percentile to the market. The reason we chose this one as an example is because the fleet manager is one of those mid-level managers. It's comparable to our purchasing manager, to our accounting manager, to our GIS manager, to our stormwater manager, facilities manager. All of those are kind of within the same realm of each other. And, and what we really found in the market was that all of them were below the 85th percentile, and that they needed to shift. So, just for an example, with the mid-level managers, the average of kind of all the ones I just listed, the average market percentile was 57%. And as we look at what we're proposing, it takes the fleet manager up to the 83rd percentile. It moves them from grade 115 to grade 118. And obviously, these positions that are not public safety are based on 2080 hours. And based on, basically, the positions I just listed, those mid-level manager positions, if you remember before, I just said it, that 57, that the average of those was at the 57th percentile. Based on the changes we're recommending, the average would be right at the 84th percentile. So, it'd be right at that 85th, right close to that 85th level. And like Elise said, it's not possible... And like Elise said, it's not possible to hit that eighty-fifth every time when you're comparing to the market. We also are recommending some organizational changes since we were looking at this at a, uh, kind of citywide perspective at a, at a big thirty-thousand-foot level. Uh, while we were looking at this, we were asking departments and thinking about this ourselves of what's a kind of more efficient way of maybe reorganizing some things. Uh, so one thing in this that we're recommending is that we dissolve the public services division and create it into two separate divisions, which would be the public works division and then the engineering services division. And based on these departments that are within public services now, this is how they would be broken up between those two divi- two new divisions. Um, and we also have some other specific position reclassifications in there, or job title changes that just fit the needs of kind of how we operate now. Um, the reason I'm highlighting the, the public services one is because it's the biggest one, but also because we do define our divisions in our ordinance. So if this is approved tonight, within a month or so, there will be an ordinance change brought to you as well to define those divisions. All right, so let's get to the, let's get to the meat of it with the cost. Um, of the three hundred and seventy-two employees that we looked at, two hundred and seven of them are affected by this proposal. Uh, the vast majority of them are in police and fire. Uh, the total adjustments we're looking at or recommending to council tonight is one point six million. I'm not going to read all the to- all the numbers like Jonathan did. Um, we'll read them later. But, uh, about one point six five million, if you want to say, in total salary adjustments, including benefits. So that includes your FICA, your, uh, long-term disability, uh, et cetera. One point four of that is the salaries portion, and two hundred and fifteen thousand of that is the benefits portion. Of the total recommended salary adjustments of that one point six five, one point two of it is for police and, and fire. And I'm going to show kind of how, what that means visually here. So of the total adjustments that staff is recommending, you can see the two big pie slices are police and fire. Uh, police and fire together equals seventy-one percent, uh, of the adjustments we're recommending. And to put that into perspective, that equal, what we saw on the last slide, one point two million is for police and fire of the one point six five. Public Works is the next highest at seven percent here. Um, their total, so police and fire are about half a million together, or each. The next highest is Public Works, and they don't even break a hundred thousand of what we're recommending. So police and fire are, are way into the six figures of what we're recommending for adjustments because the market shows that that's needed. Um, and then our other departments really are getting, you know, five figures each, less than a hundred thousand each in adjustments because a lot of, a lot of our positions are, you know, fairly compensated market-wise. Um, the compensation recommendations that we are asking of you tonight is to adopt a new salary scale for public safety employees, and then repeal the current salary scale and adopt a new salary scale for general employees with the recommended changes. Uh, the pay ranges and grades would stay the same. Uh, so one-ten right now would be the same as it is now. The changes would be that specific positions would move to different grades based on where they need to be in the market, and also the internal equity that we looked at, where mid-level managers kind of stay in the same grade with each other. Um, and then just some of the specific titles and reclassification job descriptions that we're, that we're recommending. So I think that's it for the compensation recommendations, and I will pass it on to Paul for benefits.
Well, as Elise mentioned, uh, this is a total compensation study, looked at, uh, both pay and benefits. And, uh, so we're transitioning over now into the benefit analysis side. But, uh, in looking at those similar, the same cities that we looked at for the pay, we, we compared on the benefit side. The only area of concern was that we had some lack of competitiveness on the defined benefit, uh, retirement plan. And that is definitely something that impacts the city's ability to recruit and retain personnel. So it was something we wanted to look at because that's the whole, um, point of this whole exercise. Okay, so just to, uh, describe what is the defined benefit plan, for those who don't know, it's, uh, defined benefit paid to city retirees. It's defined by a formula, that's why it's defined benefit. It's, uh, three components of it, and I'm going to show an actual example, uh, make it easier in a second. But, um, it's your final average earnings times a multiplier, times the years of service, and that's what, uh, calculates out to your, uh, employee's annual benefit at retirement. So we used an example here of somebody whose final average earnings, uh, came out to sixty-five thousand dollars. And, uh, the way that is calculated currently is that we have a average of the highest five years of your earnings to calculate that number. So it could have been, you know, then this person was making fifty thousand at the low point, and maybe seventy-eight thousand now, but it averaged out to sixty-five thousand. Um, then the multiplier, in our case, is two percent, is the multiplier that we use in our formula. And I just used an example of somebody who had, uh, been here, uh, worked twenty years of qualified service. So when you do the math, multiply that out, um, this person, uh, would get an annual defined benefit of twenty-six thousand dollars a year. And that would be steady on out. There is no COLA or anything associated with that. That would be defined for, uh, rest of their life. So that works out to about forty percent of what that final average earnings number is. But as I mentioned, that's not what they, they're currently making. If they're making currently about seventy-eight thousand, that's really only about a third of what their current pay is. So it's important, uh, at this point, to address the aspect of employee contributions. So the employees are currently contributing two and a quarter percent of their annual salary, uh, to partially offset the costs of providing the defined, uh, benefit, uh, that we offer employees. It's, uh, not free to them. It was in the past, but that changed several years ago. So we like to say, at this point, employees have skin in the game, and they help fund their own retirement. And this is a mandatory contribution, you know, they not, uh, no way out of it if you're in the defined benefit plan of the city. So part of the recommendation tonight is to increase the employee contribution by three-quarters of a percent from the current two and a quarter percent to three percent, uh, based on the, the market study. And this will, uh, generate approximately a hundred and ten thousand more per year. And, uh, it'll bring that total employee contribution up to three percent, or about four hundred and thirty-six thousand annually. And that's based on current salaries. It would probably go up higher, will go up higher if the pay plan is implemented. That might move up close to the half a million coming from the employees, uh, especially with the increase. So we had some market data to compare to, uh, like the other. So we don't have data for all fourteen cities, but fortunately, we have it for the ones that are, like I say, we're surrounded by, uh, we most closely compete with for labor. Uh, here you can see the different components to the, the formula, the pension multiplier, uh, the, the formula they use for calculating final average earnings, and then what the employee contributes, uh, as a payroll deduction. So as we mentioned, Peachtree City has a two percent multiplier. We use the highest five calendar year, years, um, over the last ten years, or sixty months. And there's our two and a quarter percent, uh, contribution that I mentioned. So if you look just out to the east of us, Stockbridge, uh, know we complete with labor for them because, uh, including myself and a couple other people in my department came here from Henry County where Stockbridge is. Um, they have a three percent formula, uh, obviously much higher than ours. They also use the five years of pay like we do. Uh, but they also don't have any contribution that their employees have to put in. So they get that benefit completely paid for by the city. Over in McDonough, uh, they have a little bit higher multiplier than us. Uh, they also use the average highest five years. And again, though, they don't have to pay anything into it, so they have us beat as well. Uh, Griffin to the south, um, two percent, five years, just like us. They have a little bit less that they have to pay for it, though, uh, than our two and a quarter percent. Noonan, uh, they've got us beaten a couple ways also. Um, they're a two percent formula, but they use the highest thirty-six months of pay, which is a, a model that's more common in recent years, uh, getting away from the, uh, five-year average, especially in a times of inflation like now, where those other two years could really drag you down. And they also, uh, do not require an employee contribution. Uh, then we have the city of Fayetteville over to the east. They use a two and a half percent multiplier. And then they also went to the three years, um, highest average pay instead of five. And you notice they do have a three percent contribution. So, and my understanding was that they actually changed to this, uh, just a few years ago, which is around the time we started looking at this. They did, you know, to kind of compete with us, and then we said, well, we want to try to match that. And that's still, uh, what our goal is there. Um, I don't know if there's another column off to the right there. Yeah, I also included Fayette County, um, just even though they're not a, a city we compete with. We do compete with labor, the county down the street. Um, they were the only ones that looked, um, like we were doing a little better then because they had the two percent formula, the five-year computation, but they require five percent from their employees. So we were, uh, in second to bottom, uh, from the county. So, uh, I think we can leave this screen, um, and next slide. So these will be the recommendations, um, basically to match our neighbors over in Fayetteville. Uh, the, uh, same kind of model that they use, and adjust that final average earnings calculation from the highest five years of earnings to the highest three years or thirty-six months. Uh, also adjust the multiplier, uh, from two to two and a half percent. And then also go ahead and, uh, increase what the employees are paying. So you can say that, you know, our employees are going to pay more if they, we're going to have this benefit, this better benefit. Um, this is part of the reason why this only applies to, uh, current retirees and not prior retirees because they will never have paid that increased deduction amount that our current and future employees will be paying. Um, and that additional, that increase there is going to generate, like I said, about another hundred and ten thousand dollars per year, about four thirty-six, um, the current pay, uh, will be more than that if we have, uh, higher pay with the pay, uh, plan implementation. So I was asked to also provide a, uh, example, like, so in the prior example, what would that look like if the new formula implemented applied to that same person? And we just had to make some assumptions here that by going by the highest three years of pay instead of the highest five years, that would bump up and give them maybe another five thousand dollars, you know, from sixty-five thousand to seventy. Um, and then, of course, the multiplier is a little higher. Use the same twenty years, of course, apples to apples. And then that would give them, uh, an annual defined benefit of about thirty-five thousand, or about fifty percent of final average earnings as opposed to, uh, forty percent the way it was the other way. Um, again, what is the budget for this? Uh, of the whole total cost, um, of the pay plan? This is, you know, the smallest component of it. It does show, uh, what each factor change would cost individually for the final average earnings calculation, you know, multiplier change. And then how that would be offset by employee contributions. So your net annual cost, uh, difference would be about three hundred thousand dollars, looking at that, uh, combined. And I, I like to emphasize that this cost is, uh, definitely looked at as an investment and, uh, insofar as it increases the plan effectiveness. And what we need, mean by having an effective DB retirement plan is that it's one that, uh, basically gets your employees to retire or to be able to retire when they hit retirement age. It's also effective and an investment in that it could encourage employees who left to consider, consider returning now that we have this investment. Somebody jumped ship, maybe they went over to the county or to Fayetteville and said, oh, well, I would consider going back to Peachtree City. So, um, it's an investment in more than one way, uh, we believe will be actually, uh, certain information I have already, there'll be an immediate return on, on this one. I want to jump to the five-year model, uh, because there's always a question was, well, with this, uh, you know, substantial pay and benefit increase, how's that can impact the model? Are we going to have to raise the millage rate and what, you know, to pay for this? And, uh, answer that, you know, flatly no. Um, we show here for the projected for two thousand and twenty-three, that forty-point-eight million includes the portion of the pay study that was for this year. And we said it was about seven hundred and thirty-three thousand to implement, uh, from now till the end of the fiscal year. Uh, this number here does include the full amount, a full implementation of the pay study, including the DB plan, which actually those costs I just showed you on the previous slide will not, uh, impact the budget until next year. We only pay into that once a year on October first, although the deductions will start immediately, the employee deductions. Um, so.
Could you repeat that verse, just what you just said about October first?
So those costs that I showed for the increase, uh, that, that netted out to three hundred and eight thousand on the, uh, defined benefit plan. We only pay, uh, fund into our defined benefit pension plan once a year on October first for the entire year. So that, uh, part that was an expense, we won't pay anything of that until October one. But the hundred and ten thousand I showed that comes from the employees, that will start immediately on, on the payroll where we start if we implement the pay plan. We'll start taking that right away. Um, so you can see here that, um, even with that load in there, that it hasn't, uh, caused us to see any spike or significant use of cash reserves, you know, to deficit funding or, or what you might call to, you know, help fund it. Um, you also can see that our uncommitted reserve balance, we're projecting for the current fiscal year, twenty-three, is about twenty-eight point four million, and we're holding steady on that number, uh, on out through the model. Still about twenty-eight point four million, um, in the out years, even though it, the percentage will drop as a, uh, we look at this number as a percent of total expenses. So as expenses get bigger, even though the reserves are, uh, steady, it's a smaller percent. So you can see our reserve percent dropping a little below fifty there. Um, again, one of our main goals in maintaining a, a multi-year financial model and best practice is to maintain millage rate stabilization, to not ever have to see any spikes in your millage rate. I had that highlighted because, uh, in, uh, we had a point-eight mil tax increase plugged for next year in case the SPOSS haven't passed. So we. So we, now that we know the SPOS passed, we took that point-eight mil increase out and took out whatever capital we would have had in here that's now pays, going to continue to be paid for by the SPOS. But the point is here that, you know, the model fully supports this pay compensation plan if it's implemented with, you know, maintaining the millage rate stabilization and reserve balances.
Thank you. So thank you, thank you for that. So I just kind of want to bring us back around here. So this is kind of where we started showing on that right-hand side. This is what the eighty-fifth percentile is and where we currently exist as far as our departments are concerned. So this was something that was defined, as we mentioned earlier, by the original MAG study and something that the council had approved that we would meet an eighty-fifth percentile. We didn't get there and this plan does get us to that eighty-fifth percentile. And again, I just wanted to illustrate where we identified based on that bar chart before where our departments were suffering, they're critical departments when it came to actually the compensation side. So a lot of work went into this, as you can see, through the modeling and through the thought and all the research that we did. But the highlight here is, is that we've identified through this process why we are having troubles retaining and recruiting folks to come to our city, especially in these two areas. Elise said something earlier that we have an officer who's looking to leave because of a pay increase to another agency. That was the exact same story on December sixteenth when I interviewed staff as there was another police officer that was interviewing at another agency because they were offering them more money to go. So this is a continuous issue that needs to be addressed. And we're hoping that we go through this process that this and these last two slides really illustrate that factor. So before I get into reading these recommendations, I'd like to ask if council has any questions of staff or of myself from this presentation?
I don't. You answered my question earlier. Thank you.
I'll have a few comments a little bit later, but no questions right now.
Okay.
Oh, now's the time? Well, do you mind if I take a few minutes on this, Madam Mayor? Yeah, I will. I'll try to keep it short.
I've got two short questions.
Okay, let councilman go.
I would tell you that the vast majority of the complaints or comments that I hear from the citizens are have to do with fire and police safety. And this by far addresses those. So I think that this is going in the absolute right direction that the citizens are looking for. So I applaud that, that they do that. That was my first comment. And I also think that the MAG study was a disappointment because when I was on the council right when that happened and it was the end-all, the beat-all, that the city manager prior to you had told us this was going to solve the problems and it obviously hasn't. So that's been a major disappointment for me. So I'm glad that you're bringing this around and solving the problem once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been out talking to what I would call the rank-and-file citizens here. And I ask them that question. You know, what do you want out of your police and fire? And they all say, let's take care of those first responders because those first responders take care of us. They take care of our property. They make sure things run correctly in the city. They reduce crime. They make sure that we've got good fire protection all over the city. And you know what? We want to have the absolute best people, the most qualified people in those positions. I asked the question, do you want average or do you want the best? And I got yes, yes, and yes from the citizens that I've spoken to. And in the past, I've gone through this kind of benefit plan and raises in business. And I'll tell you what it does. It attracts new people. It takes care of the people who are here that get recognized for doing a very professional job and they're getting paid for that. But more importantly is that they really like their jobs now. They're getting paid for it and they're going to be doing a better job because my God, I like this job. I want to keep this job. And I can remember the guru of management, Peter Drucker. He said, I know, I'll be almost done, almost done. He said, take care of your people because they will take care of you. And with that, Madam Mayor, I'm done.
So, yeah, so I'll read this, but first I thank you for those comments. And I said this before, I will say it again. I will continue to say this. It is the work of this amazing staff over here that is with us this evening that put the majority of this work together. I get to sit up here and look pretty with the rest of you, but the real work is done by those hard-working individuals. So I thank you all for all of that effort that you've done to put this plan together. So Madam Mayor, if you will, I would like to read this in as the staff would recommend the motion be to adopt a new salary scale for public safety employees, to repeal the current salary scale and adopt a new salary scale for general employees with the recommended changes. We'd adopt a resolution to enact the defined benefit plan changes, as Paul discussed, that adjusts the final average earning calculation from the highest five years of earnings to the highest three years or thirty-six months. To adjust the multiplier from two percent to two-point-five percent for the defined benefit plan. To increase the required employee contribution to the defined benefit plan through payroll deduction from two-point-two-five percent to three percent to help fund the overall and above benefit changes. We also ask that we adopt a point-seven-five pay increase for employees that are not receiving the market adjustments. We ask that we adopt for fiscal year twenty-three a budget amendment prorated to the general fund cost for fiscal year 2023 in the amount of seven-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. And that we do and implement a pay deduction change effective. This would be the beginning of May, sorry, yes, it would be the 424 pay, the beginning of May. The defined benefit changes or the FAE and the multiplier, as Paul discussed, would be effective on January first of 2023. So that means employees from that date going forward would take this, take advantage of this. And employees prior to this date would not because they were not contributing at this level. And then that the total ongoing general fund cost of the implementation of all of this is one-point-nine-six-six-million-one-hundred-and-twenty-point-seven-seven to include all pay and all benefit changes. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve new agenda item oh-four-twenty-three, oh-three, employee compensation plan as read by the city manager.
Second.
I have motion of the second. Paul, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paul opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Agenda item, oh, council staff, no public hearings. We have council staff topics, policy, AOS, naming of facilities, parks, and other areas. What we're moving forward is an opportunity to rewrite some of our policies when it comes to naming our buildings, facilities, streets, and et cetera. There would be two real opportunities, two categories of these. And that is commemorative recognition or a memorial recognition. And then secondly, a benefactor recognition. I don't think we need to go through all this. I think we're really fortunate in Peachtree City that we have so many of our founders are still here. Our first mayor, Joe Powell, is still around. Our second mayor, Rob Jones, passed away, but his family is here and they're very prolific in Peachtree City. Our third mayor, Chip Connor, lives right down the street. Francis Betters, who was the city clerk for just absolutely decades, ran the city, is still around. She's a rotarian, very active in Peachtree City. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to commemorate some of the founders of this city. When the ordinance is rewritten, it's in our packets. But I think we have a little ways to go with this as far as what kind of tributes we think we would be interested in. And I want all of council to be in on that conversation. Is this something we could discuss in a workshop?
Yes, Mayor, absolutely. So if the council wishes and we get a name of an individual that we would like to honor by putting on one of our facilities, we can certainly take that information down and then put that on a future workshop. And then council can determine at that point the scale and/or the location in which they'd like this person to have a memorial.
Are we doing a workshop in May?
We do have a workshop coming up in May.
Would we be very able to put this in the workshop or just talk it all out?
Absolutely.
We can do that. Can we talk about, a couple of comments about it before the workshop?
Absolutely.
I was concerned when you look at the second page on the third bullet for memorial naming of major facilities, parks, fields, and blah, 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 blah. The last sentence it says, unless specified, specifically approved by the mayor and city council. Can we put unanimous in there like it does in the first part? Unanimously approved by the council. We have that in the beginning.
Is it on page thirty of thirty-three?
I don't have pages on this particular one. It just says in the first part on the policy, under item two, beneficiary recognition, you use the word unanimous vote by council. But then on the second page, under the third bullet, you don't use the word, you said, in any, in no case shall a beneficiary naming be approved. I want to use the word unanimous.
I mean, I get it. I think we said that before. We want it to be unanimous here. And so can we task staff to look at this and use your expertise?
Yes, sir, absolutely. And we'd had some conversations on this before.
We've talked about it.
Yeah, so if I can get a copy of your changes, then we can. And if the council agrees, then we can incorporate those changes.
Other than that.
And then again, any of your recommendations?
Yes, sir.
Other than that, Madam Mayor, I agree with having a workshop.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll leave it at that. We have everything that we need.
We do, thank you. We do not have executive sessions.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I have motion, second. Paul, in favor, say aye.
Aye.